Good. All right, and I turn it over to you, Marcel.
Alrighty then. So, thank you, Mr. Dumas, for joining us on our debate for today. Glad to have you out here. Alright, I'm gonna begin by asking the first of the questions. These ones are about water quality. What is your stance on the switch from Detroit to KWA?
Well, you know, I've advocated when we were on the Detroit line, stay on the Detroit line. Then we went to KWA, and so it's really kind of confusing and mixed up about the KWA. A lot of issues have happened with the KWA pipeline. I don't agree with it. I think because it was born out of fraud, if you allow me to say that. The residents of the city of Flint and the council, they were misled by the drain commissioner and others. And so now we're in a terrible position that is costing the residents of the city of Flint more money. It's just a terrible situation, and so now we're back. I'm trying to see I can be delicate with it. It's bad. You know, and you can call me AC, you know, you don't, you wanted to call me Mr. Dumas. So that's what, you know, my issue with the KWA in Detroit, and as you know, we were poisoned. Hundred thousand residents of the city of Flint was poisoned. And my mom was on a feeding tube. And she was, I was putting water in her body when we were told that the water was boiled, boiled the water, so we were boiling contaminants, lead and everything else. So this water situation is a mess, and it still is a mess. And, you know, I'm gonna let you ask you a question, because I can talk a long time.
Alrighty then. Alright, so how would you go about sharing additional details on the switch with the Flint community to build transparency?
Well, again, it is not a tough question, but it's a question that is somewhat you can't answer, because we don't know. A lot of things are hidden, and, you know, from the public, a lot of things are hidden. I don't think a lot of things the council members know, but, you know, to ask me a question like that, which I couldn't give you a full answer, because a lot of the details have been hidden from the residents of the city of Flint. And, you know, I don't think there's been transparency with the KWA and the switch, and I don't think it's transparency now. What we're going through with the residents, the city of Flint, excuse me, I'm sorry, going through, so that's where I'm at, at that issue.
Hmm, alright. How would you ensure that this switch happens safely? Would there be testing required?
Well, yeah, I mean, you need testing, you know, you, I mean, you need testing, but you, you, you know what, Marcel, the issue you have is trust. We don't trust none of it. The residents of the city of Flint have been fooled, and we don't trust none of it. We don't trust the alleged testing. And we found out that the testing recently was wrong, so we just don't trust the switch, we don't trust the testing. That's where the people that I've talked to in the city of Flint, in my ward.
But how will you make sure that it happens, like, make sure it happens safe as possible for people, to make sure that at least damage, if something does happen, have the least amount happens possible? Like, how will you? Yeah, basically what I just said.
Marcel, I hear you keep asking the question, but you can't make sure. We're not in control.
Okay.
The, the gatekeepers, whoever is in control is in control. We're not in control, so, you know, for me to be perfectly honest about in that factor, we, we can't trust it. You know, we trust politicians, and they poisoned us. So you ask them, well, how can AC trust that this has happened? We can't trust it until we get people in place who, that we have confidence in. You know, who we have confidence in, and, you know, it's just like the pandemic. You know, we have to trust the science, and the same thing with the water. Hopefully, we can get people in place that we can trust them. But it's a trust factor with the water issues in the city of Flint. You live in Flint?
Yes, I do.
You journey?
Second ward. No, I don't.
Do you trust Flint water? Okay, then. Well, you right where I'm at. It's a trust factor.
Alright. Regarding the lead pipe replacement program, what do you think should happen to those residents that did not opt in? Or fear retaliation from landlords or property owners?
Well, let me, let me say this, the lead line replacement program, as you know, if you don't know, they ran out of money. Fifty-five million dollars for the lead replacement. They ran out of money. We don't know how many lead replacement lines have been replaced. We don't know how many need to be replaced. And so, I don't know who knows. I know members of the Flint City Council certainly don't know. If they knew, they would share it with the residents. So, again, we don't know who's over the lead replacement project, but what I do know is that they don't have any money. I do know that, and if you research and do your due diligence, and you'll find out that ran out of money. So we have individuals' homes. How many, I don't know, that lead line, service lines have not been replaced.
Alright. Now, we're on the next category, and this is communication planning, community outreach strategies. So for those in your ward who have not had their LSALR, how will you conduct outreach to ensure all households have their lines replaced?
Well, you know, if I'm elected council on the council, again, you have to reach out, and remember, the third ward is a senior citizen ward. And they don't do Facebook, they don't do social media. So what you would have to do is send a communication in a written form, or like a postcard or something, and to ask them to respond to the postcard saying that if the, your lead service lines have not been replaced, please send this in or call this number. Remember, we have senior citizens that make up the bulk of the third ward. And again, they don't do the social media, and they may do, they do watch news, and they do listen to radio, and so you have to reach out to our senior citizen population.
Okay, then, alright. That's interesting to know that. Um. Hello, Mr. Quincy.
Good evening. How you doing?
Great, about yourself. Alright, so we are, you've missed the other question, so I'm gonna just continue where we're going on from now.
Sure.
Um. So, this question is gonna go to AC first. Do you know the percentage of service lines that need to be replaced in your ward?
No, I do not, and I doubt if the council person or any members of the Flint City Council with the respective wards know what percentage need to be replaced. Neither do we know the percentage that has been placed. Only thing we do know, that residents in the city of Flint, all over the city of Flint, there is many lines that have not been replaced as of yet, but again, doubtfully, if they'll be replaced, because again, they run out of money. And where has that money went? I don't know. I think that that would be deemed as an investigation to find out where the money went, and, you know, how come the service lines were not replaced all over in the city of Flint? And that's one thing as council member, I'm going to ask for investigations, whether it's from the federal investigation, because remember, it was federal money that went in the service replacement line along with state money. But I think that the federal would do a more comprehensive investigation. You know, something years ago, I don't know if it's before your time or not, where's the beef? Where's the money? How come we ran out of money? And now the residents of the third ward in the city of Flint are struggling, those who have not got their service lines replaced, and it's just appalling.
Alright. Uh, alright, Murphy, do you know how many service lines need to be replaced in your ward?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Alright, next question. So it appears that LSALR is not occurring due to lack of funding. How much of a priority is LSR to your platform, and how will you go about ensuring that the program is fully funded? AC, you're first.
Well, I don't think they're gonna put any more money in that. Listen, fifty-five million dollars? And you don't know where, where's the beef, where the money is? You know, I can't see them putting any more money in there when there was a vice or theft. I think you need an investigation, a criminal investigation. You know, I'm old, and the older people say you don't keep putting good money after bad. You know, and it's people that do not want, don't care about Flint. They don't care about what Flint, the residents of Flint has gone through. That, the problem is still broken, it has not been fixed. We have a six-hundred-and-forty-one-million-dollar lawsuit that the residents of the city of Flint, like I told you about my mom, what she has suffered, individual will not be made whole. So I don't see them barring a criminal investigation, sending people to the penitentiary for stealing money, for taking the pipe, the money that came in for the water crisis to the Capitol Theater downtown, the downtown folk, to Lansing, going to Lansing, to the YMCA of Greater Lansing. It's theft, and when AC gets on the council, you know, one thing I don't like. I don't like a liar, and I don't like a thief. And my mama said, boy, if you steal, you'll lie, and if you lie, you certainly will steal.
Hmm, okay. So, what about you, Murphy?
Can you repeat the question again?
I got you. It appears that LSALR is not occurring due to lack of funding. How much of a priority is LSR to your platform? And how will you go about ensuring that the program is fully funded?
Well, my platform is to follow the charter and do what the charter says, the city council on the the service lines is a particular piece that deals with day-to-day operation that comes from the mayor and administration. The mayor and administration does, if you read the charter, hopefully you guys have read the charter prior to you guys having this forum, so you can actually understand how the city government works. The city, the mayor is give directives, so the service lines and everything that happens within the city of Flint is done by the mayor and administration, so the city council does not give directives. So it's not my job and responsibility to go down to the city council and try to micromanage how city government works, whether it was Karen Weaver, the mayor, Dan Wallen was the mayor, Sheldon Needy, the mayor, Wajo Stanley, the mayor, any of those different kind of issues, those come from the mayor, so it's not my role and responsibility to be elected in November and go down there and say, okay, well, this is, start giving directives. What I will do is look into those particular issues when it comes to those questions that you're asking, and see if there are situations such as the service lines that need to be replaced, and look into that, but that's not my role and responsibility to go down there and be like, okay, you guys need to do this. I'll look and do, do some research, so I'm, I wanna reserve what I'll do and how I act on that situation, that's how I deal with it, so I don't wanna put the horse, the cart before the horse. So the question that you're asking, I will have to do a little bit more research, look at both sides from the administration, and look in, look, look at the data, and look at the finances and all of that stuff, so that questioning, I just can't answer right now, is not my role and responsibility to do that, but I will look into it and ask questions.
Okay.
May I respond?
So.
May I respond?
So, how? Okay. So, how much of a priority is it, like a scale of one to ten, both of you? To get this done for the LSR?
I'll let Mr. Murphy go first, and I'll follow.
Okay. Alright, it's, it's a big priority. The Emergency Manager Public Act 436 is a priority. The, the water crisis is a priority, is, is a big priority. I served on the Fatshit Committee team that looked into doing research on the water crisis. So I'm up on the situation dealing with the water, and it is a big priority to get it done, and I'm looking forward to making sure that all service lines get done. So it's not, that it's not a priority to me, it's just, I'm gonna make sure I do my research and look at the data and all of that stuff before I just go to saying what I'm gonna go do, because I don't wanna mislead no one and make them think I'm finna go down there and start calling shots. That's not what I'm going to do. I'm going to do my research first.
Alright. Now we're on to the next set of questions, alright, so.
Do you want me to respond about the priority? You just asked that question. I just let him go first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, my bad about that.
No problem, no problem. Listen, let me tell you something, the responsibility of the Flint City Council, we hold the purse. It's the Flint City Council that holds the purse, the budget, not the mayor. Number one, and that's the problem that you're having, you have a mayor that doesn't know his responsibility. It is the Flint City Council that holds the purse, that holds the budget. And I'm letting you know, if you don't know that there's no more money in the budget for pipe replacement, then I don't know where you have been in the last few last year or so. There is no more money. The administration have said there is no more money. Why are we looking to find money? No, what we need to do is call the FBI in and let the Federal Bureau of Investigation find where the money is. You know, all this council investigation, fine. I'm saying call in the FBI. The money has been stolen, and people are closed lift, and it's the responsibility of the Flint City Council to find out and the, the keepers of the purse. That is their primary role in, as the council. So you can go to the next question, or we can have, you know, keep on that, but I know, see, I've been around a long time. I know the, the charter, the old charter, and I know the new charter. I know the charter. And I know the role of council, but go ahead, because, you know, this gonna be over real quick, because I love to talk.
Alright, so there is a significant amount of funding coming from the Biden administration to address environmental justice concerns, such as Justice 40 Initiative, which is President Biden's accountability plan to allocate at least forty percent of funding to Black, Latinx, indigenous, and historically disenfranchised communities. How will you engage with other policymakers at the local, state, and federal levels to ensure these resources reach the Flint residents they are intended to serve and support? AC, you go first.
Well, first of all, you know, that's why we have to vet individuals that serve us, and remember, I said, serve us. Elected officials are not to be served, but they are elected to serve. And we had to vet those individuals from our state partners to our federal partners, and even our partners within our community, and as you know, the Black and brown skin, Hispanic, and people of other minority races have been hard, hit hard, and we were hit hard by the pandemic, and we have to make sure that those money that the Biden-Harris administration sent for the express purpose earmark for those communities are spent appropriately, and don't let it be like the water crisis money that went to the YMCA of Greater Lansing, or the Capitol Theater, the folk downtown and all like that, and so that's why it's important to vet people, vet those who you want to represent. And if I'm making the council, and I think I will, trust me, it's gonna have to be a whole lot of people to go have to give answers to the community who they fail. And they have failed the city of Flint. From the federal, state, county, and local.
Alright.
Say something, Marcel. I didn't get none of their money to run for campaign. I didn't, they, they didn't, they didn't have to put out no literature for me. You know, these fake, these fake pieces of literature. You know, these dark money literatures, that they wanna take the Flint City Council hostile, so that look forty-seven million dollars that came in on May the nineteenth hasn't been allocated yet. And they're waiting, they're waiting to get those individuals on council who will dance to their music, because they've been bought and sold. AC Dumas is not bought and sold. You know, I'm retired, and I have a nice retirement and all like that, you know? So I've been blessed, and that's where I stand. I want everyone to know where AC Dumas stands.
Alrighty. What about you, Murphy? I can repeat it for you.
In all due respect, I wanna stay on this, with you guys, but I ain't at the city council meeting. I come here to have a forum, we gonna talk about the issues, this, these shots that AC Dumas is firing with this dark money and these literature and all of this stuff that he throwing out here, I can go there, and I could turn this forum into something that I didn't come on here to do. What I did come here to do is ask, answer the questions that you're asking and do it to the best of my ability. Not me and him, and what he talking about, I could go there, but I'm, I'm be the bigger person, even though he older than me, and he should be
And wiser.
And I'm, whatever you say.
And wiser.
If you keep going that route, this debate go turn into something that
That's where I wanted to go. I wanted to go that way.
So.
Alright, this is Latrice, from Black Millennials of Flint. I just want to make sure that we all acknowledge the debate rules that were distributed in your calendar information. We ask that as you have this platform, that you act with respect to each other and to your constituents who may be watching. Thank you.
My, my point is that. So I'm willing to do this, if we gonna talk about the issues and all of that, but if you just keep on throwing them shots like that, I'm gonna get up off of this thing, because I ain't got time for that with him, and I, I answer y'all questions to the best of my ability. But all of that, what he doing, and y'all not cutting him off, I'm not with that right there. But I will stick to the questions that y'all asked.
Alright, sir.
Now.
Understandable.
Could you repeat that question again, while I was interrupted?
Alright. There is a significant amount of funding coming from the Biden administration to address environmental justice concerns, such as the Justice 40 Initiative, which is President Biden's accountability plan to allocate at least forty percent of funding to Black, Latinx, indigenous, and historically disenfranchised communities. How will you engage with other policymakers at the local, state, and federal levels to ensure these resources reach the Flint residents they are intended to serve and support?
I'm excited about that money coming to Flint. I've already been having conversations with policymakers that's already dealing with trying to bring some programming to Flint. I'm already engaged with the Sylvester Brown Center with the new sports complex center, Linnell Jones over there. My, my girl, that's over there marrying, so we, we doing some things, and I would like to see that in the community. I'm waiting until I get here, and I will do my best to work with these people, and I'm so glad that when I walk in a room, I walk in a room with people that wanna work with me, and I'm more of a solution-driven person versus coming in there with controversial, and I'm looking forward to work with them, and I'm gonna work with who all that wanna see Flint and the third ward move forward. Thank you.
Alright, sir. Alrighty then. Alright, now we're on to education and school facilities. So, SPED and funding. How would you improve the availability and accessibility to special education wraparound services in K-12 schools and programs in your ward?
Well, right now, you, you want me to answer it first?
AC, go first.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'll do my first all the time. Let him go first.
Alright.
Okay, well, right now, I've been working, we, me and Pastor Augustus is working to try to sustain Jefferson School, which is owned by the city of Flint. Right now, I'm paying the utility bills up there out of my personal pocket to try to keep the building going. In the third ward, as you know, there are no elementary schools or no schools in the third ward now, but you do have schools in the third ward, but they are, all are closed down. I served on the Facilities Committee for the Flint School District some years ago. We looked at the schools, we looked at the facilities, we looked at the populations of schools. That was up under former superintendent Linda Thompson. So I know the dynamics of what it looks like far as the declining in the school population, and how we had a whole bunch of schools in the city of Flint, where we was paying a lot of utility and losing a lot of funding, because we had more school than we had school kids, so that's why, part of why the schools were being closed down, because you had a school that had a capacity of probably eight hundred students. But now, you, that school was only holding a hundred and something, so you was having six schools that was for four or five hundred students versus what it have now. So we need to just look at reconsolidating the school system. The school system is a different entity than the city of Flint. The city of Flint is not responsible for the schools district, but the schools are within the city of Flint. So I think we both share interest to see something done with the school and the educational system, because it's within the city of Flint. So I'm looking forward to working with whoever the superintendent is, whoever the school board is at the school level to work and see what we can do to make, have a good, great educational system. Thank you.
Alright, you. I had no idea, you pay for the utilities at the school out of your own pocket.
Yes. Yes, they, it's in my name right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Because I look at all of these schools I went to, they all closed down and everything.
The city of Flint owned Jefferson, so the difference between Jefferson and the other schools is Jefferson was, is owned by the city. So that school is separate than the other schools that's owned by the Flint School District. Just wanna know about that. And also, Garfield School was a school that's in the third ward that was open in my lobby. If you go by Garfield, it's boarded up, that's because of the work of Quincy Murphy, working with, in collaboration and working with people, going to the table and seeing how can we work together to at least secure this building, so it won't be open. What you are hearing from me is not talk. You will be hearing a lot of action tonight. What, what you are hearing from me is not talk. You will be hearing a lot of action tonight. So when you ask the questions, I'm gonna be able to compare that with some work that you can touch and feel that Quincy Murphy has done and not just talk.
Alright, sir. Alright. Now to you, A C Dumas. Dumas, my bad.
Well, let me say this. I talked with Pastor Aldrich uh Stavity about Jefferson School and we talked at length about Jefferson School. And but I'm gonna stay with uh the question that you uh ask about special education. I've got two sisters. One have retired. It was a special education teacher. Uh my baby sister is a special education teacher. And as many uh may have, may or may not know, at the Dort School that uh I worked in compensatory services, uh and that was part of follow through and head start. Uh which was a part, we had special education in there. But we have to recognize is that as Mr. Murphy did say, there are no schools in the third war open, none whatsoever. And if you, and and let me tie this in a little bit. Uh you know, when you don't have schools in, let's say, the third war, a lot of things are contingent upon schools, even the grants and the money that comes for our education system. Hardest hit funds and what that is, you see the blight. If you have a school open, let's use Carpenter Road. Then the hardest hit funds go to tear, take down the uh the bandit homes and all those. So it was a strategic plan to close schools in the black community, especially the third war, whether it's Garfield or whether it was the uh uh Carpenter Road School, whether it's Johnson School, whether it's uh T Window uh uh Williams School that was named after Mayor uh Karen Weaver's uh dad. All those schools have been closed down in the third ward. And so you see it, it causes the blight because we cannot get the hardest hit funds. Especially the wraparound programs are very, very important. Uh you know, and we have to get grants, but I think that and I, the money from the water crisis also was given for wraparound programs. Again, you got to get investigation and find out where is the beef for the wraparound program that our babies, our children desperately need. So you know, uh I just wanna say that we don't need boarded up schools. We need schools that's open. And I got a know of a group that's uh put in a bid for the Carpenter Road School. And uh I was just excited when I I found out about it. And I told them whatever I can do to help them, you know, if it's uh, it's not what you know, it's whose you know. And I know individuals that I think is sensitive to our babies and sensitive to their plight. And that's what I'm, I'm gonna try to do. I'm trying to help the least of them.
Alright Dan, next question. So in terms of air quality, uh how would you address the lack of H V A C and or other mechanisms to remove toxins from the indoor air?
Who, who, who you want to answer, answer that one first?
It can be you, Murphy.
Okay, well, my role and responsibility as city council was to um, you know, make my community safe, decent and clean. Um my expertise is not into um coming in, um creating uh a, a, a platform for um clean air, but um right now we working with the um to stop the Ajax plant from um coming on um Carpenter Road. So I've been working with Mona Yunus now and um Tony with Michigan United uh in the church prayers in the church on Carpenter Road. So we've been trying to do things like that, but far as me creating a platform to um have safe air. Uh we want that all throughout the whole city of Flint, not just in the third war. And I will hope that there's no um areas around in the city of Flint that's um creating toxic air. But far as my responsibility and my role as city council, you asking and you, for me, the, when I get elected to city council is I'm finna go after um clean air. No, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna do, make sure I protect what we have now is try to stop those plants like Ajax from coming in to the city of Flint. What I don't want to do, I wanna come in here and um use the platform of coming on to a forum or whatever to give up broken promises. So you would think when I get in office, I'm gonna uh create this whirlwind of um new changes. I'll do the best I can. I'm gonna follow the charter, but that's not my um that's not my job in particular to go straight after um creating um uh clean airs, whatever. I don't know. I, I guess you will have to have some, the EPA or whoever will have to bring in something. I don't know what that look like right there and I never even in the city charter, when we was revising the charter and I served on the charter, we didn't talk about the role and responsibility of a council to deal directly with um clean air and all of that different kind of stuff, which is important. We wanna protect our clean air, but the role and responsibility of the council is not just to deal directly with clean air, but to make sure that we are breathing in clean air. Yeah, that's part of having a safe and decent community to live with, play in. But far as the, how you worded that question, it almost sound as if you asking me to be responsible for eliminating um things in the air that may be toxic. And I wanna be careful how I answer that.
Yeah, i- it's more like pertaining to like to especially ensure like the safety from COVID nineteen and stuff like that.
Okay, that's all good. I understand.
Alright, A C you next.
Well, you know, uh we do have to protect uh, our job is to protect and serve in this COVID nineteen, I could deal with the other issues about pollution, air and water, but to direct uh what you're saying. COVID nineteen uh is uh real. Many uh individuals have died, family, friends have died. Now we got the Delta there area. And so it's very important that we protect uh the community from uh those uh viruses and as uh member of the elected officials, whether you're uh federal, state, county or local. Our job is to protect and serve the residents who have elected us. And I do believe in masks. I think that it should be required that individuals wear masks. Myself, I have taken both of uh the Pfeiffer uh shots and I'm waiting uh to get my booster. Uh I'm very uh careful, uh you know, uh what I touch and environment I'm in. And I think uh that's very important. I wouldn't open up the Flint City Council uh chambers until uh we're sure that it's a clean and safe uh environmental uh facility guided by the CDC and other agencies. So it is important to me uh when we talk about air quality of what we're breathing and what we're touching. And you know, because a lot of individuals, my mother died uh during the uh on April the eleventh during the pandemic and it just had got started like in March. You know, but she didn't die of that and she didn't have uh COVID and neither did I have COVID. And you know, uh now that we understand that it's airborne. We understand that now. When it first started, we didn't know, but now we understand that it's airborne. And so, you know, I uh urge everyone to wear a mask, uh practice safe distancing. You know, that's uh some of the things that, you know, I admonished people to do. And so, you know, and as a, a leader, uh we are to uh protect and serve the individual that elected us.
Alright, we're gonna move on to the next question. So communities impacted by lead tend to have issues with increased violence. How will you address the health and safety residents in your ward experiencing violence, especially gun violence?
Outside it don't make no difference.
Yeah, you go.
You know, that's what they say. They say that COVID increased the violence. Uh I don't necessarily agree with that, that caused the COVID.
Not COVID, it's the lead.
Well, I mean, the lead, my fault, the lead, and and I did hear you uh uh increase uh violence. I don't necessarily agree with that, that lead in the water increased violence. I think that uh it's a mindset. I think that uh you know, it's a lack of allow me to say this. Spirituality. Lack of God. You know, people do what they wanna do. And I don't think that lead in the water has anything, a great impact of violence in our community. You know, in the city of Flint, we have fifty six uh homicides uh uh so far. And uh I, I guarantee it wasn't contributed about lead in the water. Remember, uh a lot of individuals that's uh killing and doing these horrendous crimes. The lead is what, seven years old now, you know, uh they didn't ingest, ingest the, the lead. I think it's a culture that we have to get rid of that in the only way we gonna get rid of is ask God to help us. You know, and, and everybody's putting it on lead or this or, or, or that. I just don't agree with that. And that's my opinion. And my opinion is like a nose. And your opinion is like a nose. Everyone has one. That's just my opinion.
Alright, Murphy?
Thank you. That's a good question. Um one of the things that I've done was uh you know, uh you guys may not know or do know, um I adopted Dewey Park and been maintaining Dewey Park free of charge ever since the emergency manager Eric Kurtz came in. I've been mowing and maintaining the park. Um one of the things what, un- under, when the lead um came into the city of Flint, you had a lot of donors that donated to the city of Flint because the image of Flint was so bad. So what they wanted to do was donate outside of um just service line replacements. They wanted to bring positive change and give um kids somewhere to play and have somewhere safe and positive to do. So in that, what we done was um, we was able to attain and um I'm a grant writer too. So I wrote a couple of grants um through the community foundation, working in collaboration with Isaiah Oliver and Leon Williams um over there to um obtain some money for Dewey Park. And one thing I wanted to do was work in a particular targeted area because the third ward is large, but I wanted you to see a significant impact in my work. So once again, like I said, what you are hearing from me is not just talk, but just also things that you can touch and feel. So when the lead um leached and um brought on the um water crisis in the city of Flint, we took Dewey Park and converted it into a nice place, safe haven for people to come and play um and have different activities. When you go to Dewey Park, we, we done a um baseball diamond. I was able to obtain a grant for fifteen thousand to do the baseball diamonds. Bruno Myers donated some money to do the um Dewey Park, so we was able to create a new tennis court. Uh put lighting in the car park to keep it safe at night. We got solo light, so if you go through there right now, you will see it lit up. Which it ain't happened. We, we just got a um Flint brand grant recently and I'm still not finished with that grant. I think I got about sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars left with that funding. Habitat is my fiduciary for that. So it was a collaboration of work. We got benches all the way around the basketball court. They look really nice. So if you guys get a chance, go look around there. We redoing the murals on the court. So when you go to Dewey Park, you can play horseshoes, you can play tennis, you can play basketball. You can do something up under the pavilion. You can swing on the playground. All of that is new. And the neighbors in the community, we want to give the community so a place, a positive place to come and play. Sylvester Brown Center, Linnell McKinley now, they run, um they let their kids come out there and play in the park. We done collaborated with them. They did baseball training in the park. We working with the sports. So we got a lot of exciting things that we doing in the community. We wanna move the third ward forward. And hopefully the Lord bless me to get in there. We gonna continue to make change, not just in Dewey Park, but in Ophelia Bonner Park, all these other parks and uh and man, uh some more other colleagues that's running for office. We gonna work together and collaborate and we gonna make things and we are solution driven people. And we gonna be part of the solution and not the problem. Thank you.
Alrighty, sir.
Well, let me, let me, let, let me address uh something, please. You know.
I gotta go to the next question.
Okay, that's fine.
Alright, alright, so the black maternal health crisis is one of the most urgent family health issues that must be addressed. Women and mothers in Flint experience more miscarriages, lower fraternity, fraternity and smaller babies due to lead exposure before and during pregnancy. How will you prioritize the long-term health needs to other mo- mothers and their babies? Alright, uh Murphy?
You go first?
Yep.
I can. Um once again, um that is an area that's not in particular. Um I wanna say um part of just my job description as a council to deal directly with that. That's why you got Hurley Hospital. That's why you got Hamilton Health Clinic. That's why you got Genesee Health System. That's why you have all of these different agencies that deal directly with that. So what I'll do, once that issue come, if that issue come before city council, I will connect them with the right necessary agencies that deal with that and I'm gonna stay in my lane. Thank you very much.
Alright. A C?
Well, I think that issue is already have come before uh the residents and the people of the city of Fl- of Flint doing the uh lead issue. And we know that you've got a lot of women who have have experienced uh miscarriages. They have uh experienced fetal uh trauma. And you know, uh it's sad, yes it is. And I think as a council person, we have to grapple and attack all of those issues. And I feel uh very sorry for the uh mom, and, and you have to remember this. A lot of the uh individuals that are bearing children now, a lot of them drank uh the water seven years ago. And as you know, uh it affected them then. And now they have uh in uh bearing children. And we find out that uh it has been uh very tra- traumatic for mothers. We're finding out the, the cancer cluster has went up, uh people have died because of lead. And we don't really know the extent of, of uh lead. I did uh see on the Millennium page uh while I was looking today or yesterday about mothers giving birth. And it's just a sad situation. We do want the health providers uh to do uh research and study. Because in the city of Flint, I'm talking about that lead uh in the city of Flint uh regarding, you know, the health of our uh women and that's having uh children. But not only in city of Flint, but you know, Benton Harbor has the same issues. The same identical issues that's the city of Flint have. You know, about uh women that have uh pregnant and, 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 and and having uh difficult in, in childbirth that were losing their chil- children. So lead is led in other contaminants. It's not just lead. These are a lot of different things. So I think, you know, it's very uh necessary that we engage with those health providers, those scientists that uh know what they're doing and and find out how we can eliminate uh these issues. Especially with our pregnant uh women, you know, that's having children. Especially with our pregnant uh women, you know, that's having children.
Alrighty. I'm going to the next question. How will you provide support and increase resources to organizations such as Revive Community Health Clinic? Who are already working to improve maternal health outcomes? Alright, uh Murphy, you can go up with this one.
Um I'm not familiar with that um agency or whatever, so um I will reserve my comment on what I will do with that. I'm not gonna make any kind of promises on that right there, cuz I'm not aware whoever this agency is that you're talking about. So I'm, I'm not familiar, I'm more community Quincy into physical things, the parents, what the community can look like. Third war, I am a community activist, you know, I try to stay in my lane, the third war is. Um you know, I'm looking, with me being on the charter and knowing the role and responsibility of the city council. Some of the questions that you are asking is um, it it's important, don't get me wrong. But I I I've gotta stay in my lane as a council to abide by the city charter and uphold the charter. My goal and responsibility of running for city council is to uphold the city council. And there are a lot of components and a lot of things that's going on in the city of Flint. That makes the city of Flint a great place to live and work in, but my job is just gonna be to stay.
My bad, anyway, that was for, I won you a four year award anyway, my bad.
Alright, no problem, no problem, okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna scrap that and go to the next question here.
Well, no, I would like to answer that question, may I?
Nah, I'mma go up to the next one, cuz we running load, I'm trying to help and get the rest of the answer.
What I'm gonna talk about revive, I think that is very, a very uh 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 important question. Because the, the money they have come in, the forty-seven million.
If we got time after this next, there there's like three, just like three, two, and that's where you can talk. Not trying to cut you off, I'm sorry, but.
Well, you did cut me off, and I think, you know, uh but uh it's your, it's your show. I think that's very important.
Sorry about that, you can answer, I'm.
Well, I think Revon is a great organization and that's what the forty-seven million dollars that have come to the city of Flint. Should be going in uh to organization like revive. That was the purpose of the forty-seven million, to go to organizations like revive. I just wanna say that, and that is the responsibility of the Flint City Council, thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Alright, uh I'm gonna ask this question, how will you ensure access and. Usability of effective wraparound services to address community health? Uh to include access to nutritional foods, mental health services, et cetera?
You want me to answer first?
Yes.
Okay, well, um what I'll do is uh make sure that I um present myself approachable. With the different agencies where uh uh people wanna work with you. Because one thing you don't wanna do, you don't wanna bring no one in, and you'd be like, oh lord, here he come or here they come. I don't wanna work with the person, so I'm always going to um keep my eyes and ears open. And um listen to the different resources and try to connect them with the residents. I already have people calling me all the time, um trying to make sure they figure out where things are. I'll, I'll, uh I'm gonna be having community meetings and just putting out brochures and resources to the community, let them know the availability. Cuz a lot of times people just don't know what's available for them, so I do my best that when I come in the room with whoever I'm coming in. I try not to come in um as controversial and just be open. That's it.
Alright, and AC, this is gonna be the last one, and I'm gonna ask the questions in the comments people have. So AC, you can go ahead now?
Well, again, the forty-seven million dollar that came in uh on May the nineteenth, that's what that money is for. To send for wraparound services and so on and so forth. And that's the duty and responsibility of the Flint City Council, they appropriate the funds. And hopefully on October the eighteenth, uh the Flint City Council will start appropriating funds. Of the forty-seven million dollars that's been sitting in an interest-bearing account for wraparound services, et cetera.
Alright. Alright, so. Don't remember which topic we're on with that question, alright, so. How will you, it's my favorite question, so. What is your stance on community health and how will you use your platform to ensure residents in your ward are healthy? What is your definition of a healthy community? Uh AC, go first.
Well, you know, my definition of a healthy community is a community that has a great quality of life. And that's from housing, that's from uh healthy food, uh where we live. Uh where we stay, where our children uh play, and all that is contingency upon one thing. You have to have the funds to do whatever you wanna do. And I think that it's incumbent uh for city council to appropriate the necessary funds. To create a healthy community and not, uh not one person has all the answers. It's a collaboration of people that have the answer. Now think that uh if you get like-minded individual, they care about the residents, you can have a healthy community. Especially the third ward and you know, I just said this, that, you know, they talking about building apartments. Well, I'm not for building apartments, I'm uh for home ownership. And so I think it creates a healthy neighborhood, which creates a healthy community.
Alright, Murphy?
I think a healthy community starts with the healthy city council. A healthy city council is someone that is coming down there, taking care of the business of the city of Flint and making the city of Flint attractive. To bring healthy businesses into the city of Flint to create change. Uh what that look like is um us not um being discriminative and uh calling a race card all the time. When it comes down to people that don't agree with us, not only that, healthy is n- um allowing space for um people. The LGBT community to be able to allow them the opportunity to run for office regardless of their sexual orientation. And not um saying I'm a um against that based on my religion, and I don't mind you being religious. But a person with um the LGBT that wanna apply for a job, they should have uh. The ability to be able to run for uh office and not be discriminated against. And not saying I'm not voting for them cuz they, this way, that's being healthy. Healthy is us working with the cleaning green program to clean up the vacant lots instead of talking about them. Healthy is at least doing the decorative boarding stuff, some of the stuff that we do to board up houses until they can either tear them down or rehab them. Healthy is when you go and you can convert vacant lots into community gardens, we got a hoop house over here on Gollisby Street. Over there with Mark Ball and you got one on Meringle Street, you got the neighborhood engaged with her, that's healthy. Healthy is when coming up with solutions, coming up with what um the uh Sylvester Broom Sports Complex. Healthy is work over there in the Roland Wood Neighborhood Association, how they is doing things, great things, and working with them and be solution driven. Healthy is not calling a race car all the time when you go to city council and bringing racial healing to our community. That's what healthy look like, and until we get there, and if we keep calling this race car down here, it is gonna get terrible in the city of Flint. And this go uh spill into the community, it already is spilling into the community. When you look on Facebook and you look at the. They are going back and forth with this race issue. Healthy is not being discriminative towards people regardless, because they don't agree with you or they don't look like you. Or their sexuality is not the same as you, they have a right to vote, they have a right to participate, they have a right to apply for a job. Regardless of their sexuality, that's what healthy look like to Quincy Murphy.
Alright, and with that last statement, I am happy uh that we got to have this meeting today. Uh this is the first minute I got, I got to have two candidates on, um. So I'm grateful you guys got to come out here, you guys gave me some wonderful feedback. Uh I hope those out in the audience are also happy with this debate as well. Thank you for both of you guys' time. I wish you luck on both your race.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome.
Bye now.
Bye bye.